Welcome everyone to Commissioner's Court. We're glad to see you here today with us. And happy Thanksgiving as we get ready to go into this wonderful week. With us this morning, we have Brother Brent Williams to lead us in our invocation, and Commissioner McCam, the pledges, please.
Let's pray. By the way, just want to thank you and praise you for everything you give us. We know every good and perfect gift comes from above, but you've given us two places in Scripture that mention Thanksgiving, and it says to rejoice always, pray without ceasing, and in every circumstance, give thanks where this is your will for us in Christ Jesus. But you've also stated that we are not to worry about anything, do not worry about anything, but in everything with prayer and supplication with Thanksgiving to make our requests known to you, so that the peace of God, which transcends all understanding, would keep our hearts and minds in Christ Jesus. So I pray that over the court today and over their families, that they will find that peace, and that peace is giving thanks to you, because you are the provider of all things. And it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the D.C., Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Brother Williams, thank you, sir. Well, again, the time is 9:01. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting Commissioner's Court to order. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
No, sir.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes of previously held meeting of Commissioner's Court, held on November the 19th, 2024. Court, are there any additions, deletions, or comments to the minutes?
Hearing none, Judge. I move we approve the Commissioner's Court regular session of November 19th, 2024, as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the minutes of Commissioner's Court of November the 19th, 2024, as presented. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action on communications facility lease agreement for the JCC One Communications Tower with Terrent Regional Water District. And Mr. Strom, if you would, and Jody, if you would as well.
Good morning, Court. Mr. Davis had worked with Terrent Regional on this contract. Everything looked good. There was some issues during the negotiating process as far as the time of the term, and just making sure that the county had enough time. If anything bad happened in the contract, we don't anticipate that happening, but if it did, to make sure that the county had enough time to remedy that. And so we went from a 30-day period to a six-month period, and that would allow the Sheriff's Office and law enforcement to be able to transition out of this contract if necessary.
And for background on this, Jody, if you would, lay out our relationship with Terrent Regional in this matter.
So we have microwave and transmit receive towers, as well as a shelter and all the RF equipment on their facility at JCC inside the compound.
And when we originally went into this agreement, we took an existing tower that Terrent Regional owned, and then partnered with them and expanded on that tower?
Yes, sir. So they built a tower down there at JCC to 160 feet with a design of 260 feet. So we added the 100-foot to it to be able to put the microwave and the transmit receive towers at the height we needed them to get back to Central and Crossroads.
Court, questions?
Well, once we did get out of this contract, or the contract doesn't renew, and we decided to do something else, or the county decided to do something else, do we get the 100-foot back, or no?
That's above my pay grade, sir. I don't know what the conversation was with that.
What we can enter into is, or what can add to that, when we entered into this, what, four years ago, three years ago?
2019, 2020, yes, sir.
It was to our economic advantage, when you're looking at the cost of that. And that was one of the reasons for the negotiations back and forth, was to identify those type of issues, in that we hope that the length of time, having that use and the cost savings, if we ever did have to leave that location, and you can't just take the top off of the tower and walk off with it. But the county will receive just through its use over the period of time, compensation for that tower. Because it was, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, what that extension cost us.
About $53,000.
$53,000. But when you're looking at either building a tower, it was about half a million dollars for the tower.
The tower in the compound, yes, sir.
And if you are renting one, is like $5,000 a month?
It would be, at the time when we were looking to lease the tower, it was $4,900 a month, is what we would have with the equipment that we have at JCC.
Okay.
So we probably mostly already, at that lease price, probably already recouped what we spent on that tower.
Yes.
One year.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff?
That'd be great.
And I do want to mention that Terrent Regional was really open to negotiations, and we were able to communicate with them. So I do want to thank them as well.
Yes, Terrent County has been a fantastic partner in this project across the board. Comments?
I'd agree with you. They've been a great partner to have. It was an advantageous location for our towers, and we've worked with them closely for three or four years now, five maybe. And I want to say thank you for the work they put into it, and making this communication system what it is today.
And in that relationship, I just remembered, we had our VHF legacy system on the water tower over by the dam that Terrent Regional owned for decades. And so this is a longstanding relationship.
And just to point out, the communication with them is always excellent. If we have a problem, I call, email, I get a response back very efficiently. So they've always been great to work with.
Any other, any questions or comments, Court?
Judge, one more thing on page 16. Does that name need to be changed?
It is under former County Judge Richard Sanders' name. We have addressed it in the original document to correct. Any other questions? Entertained a motion with the judge's authorization to sign?
I'll make the motion with the judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the agreement with Terrent Regional Water District with the county judge's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item three, consider and take action on an interlocal agreement with Malikoff ISD and Henderson County for the Crimes Against Children Task Force. Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Court. This is the standard interlocal agreement that we have with all the participating entities with the Crimes Against Children Task Force. This one actually is for a three-year term, so we don't have to continue to bring these back before the court every year. Malikoff ISD is, they're very, very well satisfied with the participation that they're getting from the task force. They use the task force. There's 13 entities that are signed up and use the task force right now. And I just wanted to take a little bit of time to tell y'all, we just had a major operation and a major case a couple of weeks ago. And just going over there and as a supervisor and an administrator, going over there and trying to pitch in ideas, we didn't have any ideas that the task force didn't already do and already run. This is one of the best things that Henderson County has ever done, and I appreciate the court for allowing us to do this. They solved that case within hours, and we were really behind the eight ball when it got started. And we had a good resolution to that case, and there's now people in jail on first-degree felony charges. So this is, it was just amazing to sit and watch all the contacts that they've made. We had the Rangers in the room, we had the FBI in the room, we had Tyler PD, San Antonio PD, out-of-state police departments, out-of-state sheriff's offices, all communicating within 30 or 45 minutes. And it all helped the good resolution that we wanted at the end of the day. So I'm very proud of this task force and thank the court for allowing us to establish it. They're doing wonderful things for Henderson County.
Court, questions?
How many entities did you say?
There's 13 right now.
13?
Yes, sir.
Has there any other ones that haven't been involved? Are they, have they seen the work that the task force is doing and want to jump on board?
We're still plugging at them. We're still plugging at them. Some of the folks with the other entities want to be part of it, but we just haven't, they're governing, it all hadn't came together, basically. And we're hopeful. I mean, the entities that are part of it, you know, were hesitant at first, just basically giving the case over, but now they're seeing what good it does for them and the county. And I'm hopeful. We still got a couple that we need to plug at, but we'll see.
How many can you totally, or could you have included more than 13?
I know there's at least four out there right now that could join.
Well, I've heard nothing but positive throughout the community, so I don't know, do you or the DA head that up?
It was Jenny Palmer's idea. And then myself and Clint and Sheila got on board, and then the court got on board. So, but it was the district attorney's idea, and it was.
Well, we say this every time we have a resolution about senior abuse and child abuse, but this task force right here is to be commended for you, the departments that are involved on the day-to-day aspects of trying to find kids and that kind of stuff. So tell the people that are down in the trenches, we appreciate what they do.
Yes, sir.
You say that we're one of the first counties to start the task force?
We are the second county in the state of Texas. We're the first rural county, and the CAC of Texas is still using us for a pilot program. We just had a meeting with another rural county a couple of weeks ago, explaining how we set it up. And there's other counties throughout the state of Texas now looking at us and trying to establish them throughout the state.
And Sheriff, this particular agreement in front of us is with an ISD.
Yes, sir.
But there are also police departments. Those are really the, the education and law enforcement are the ones that have been a part of this. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We contract with the, basically the police departments, and ISDs do have the PDs. The ISDs are at a cheaper rate, because normally the crime doesn't happen on their campus, but they are a big help to us, and they do a lot of transport of the juveniles to the CAC for us. And then from time to time, there's allegations made against staff, or something could happen on the campus, that we go in and adopt those cases and clear those cases up for the ISDs. And it really helps. I mean, when you've got an ISD that's a two-person department or a four-person department, they don't really have time to sit down and work these types of cases, because they're very, very in-depth.
And it is a special set of skills.
Yes, sir.
Into this. Court, any other questions or comments? Entertained a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Malikoff ISD in Henderson County for the Crimes Against Children Task Force with the judge's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Tully to approve the interlocal agreement with Malikoff ISD in Henderson County for the Crimes Against Children Task Force with the county judge's authorization to sign. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously. Item number four is consider and take action on an interlocal agreement with Crossroads ISD in Henderson County for the School Resource Deputy Program. Sheriff?
Yes, Court. This is the agreement that we've had for several years now with Crossroads. It hasn't been updated since 2018, and Superintendent Tedder reached out to me and wanted to update it, and it needed to be updated due to just the years on here, and then the salary has increased since 2018. And what the county is basically responsible for is 80% of the overall salary. When I say that, I mean, the school is responsible for 80%.
[laughing]
But that also is, you know, the benefit package, everything is included in that. So we updated the price, and Crossroads ISD is happy with the service they're getting. They did have me add some stuff as far as duties to the deputy that's out there due to the new regulations of school safety through the state, and I did that. And they're just asking the court to approve this agreement for another year.
Questions, Court?
That's the only school that we've got that contract with now.
Yes, sir. We had, we had La Pointe, and they established their own police department at the ISD.
Please for your signature, the judge is...
Whichever the court wishes.
This program was developed kind of running up to pre-police department, school police departments. And it has supplemented, as you said, Crossroads and Pointe for a while. These schools that lie outside of municipalities was where we really were, when this began in 18, we really saw the need for this.
Yes, we were lacking as far as security at those schools. Two, there was actually three of them that were out in the rural counties, and two of those now have their own police departments, and Crossroads doesn't anticipate doing that. And another thing I wanted to add to, the deputy is there, you know, works at the school during the school year. They take their vacations when the school's closed. So during the summer months is when the sheriff's office gets to use that deputy. He comes and reports to the patrol division and helps out patrol during the summer months, which is usually our busiest time of the year.
Anything further, Court? Thanks, Sheriff. Entertained a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Authorization?
Judge's authorization to sign.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the interlocal agreement with Crossroads ISD in Henderson County for the School Resource Deputy Program with the county judge's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thanks, sir. Item number five is consider and take action on change order number one for CSI construction for AgriLife and Senior Citizens Building. We have Ms. Vaughn with us.
Good morning, Court.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is just the change order that we discussed, our last ARPA workshop, for the owner betterment allowance of $90,000.
Court, you'll remember the discussion that we had, and that brought us to this, is meeting the ARPA regulations for obligation of funds by December 31st of this year. And with us, we have Mr. Wesley Trailer. If you wouldn't mind, Les, come on up and kind of recap, not only for the court, but for public edification.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Yes, this is the change order for the SCI contract out there at the Senior Citizens Building and new AgriLife building that's going to be built. This change order is to make sure that the contractor has certain things in place to make sure that we can cover any type of contingency in any items that might be needed inside of those facilities, especially pertaining to furniture. We thought it was most important to get that done immediately, to make sure that we kind of had all of our ducks in a row. If y'all have any questions regarding this item, please let me know.
Court, questions?
This is, this is one of the last things we have to do to get started on this project, even.
That's right. We're finally there, Commissioner.
Keep your fingers crossed. Court, any other questions? Entertained a motion with authorization?
I'll make the motion with the judge's authorization.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Tully to approve the change order number one for SCI construction for AgriLife and Senior Citizens Building ARPA project with the county judge's authorization to sign. Any further comments? All those in favor passes unanimously. Item number six, consider and take action to purchase a cell-on-wheels, otherwise known as COWs, for emergency communication operations with the ARPA project. Ms. Vaughn?
Good morning, Court. This is the, to move forward with the cell-on-wheels, I believe we're purchasing two. The attachment has one listed, but for a total of $189,579.96.
Would you repeat that, 189?
Sorry, $189,579.96.
Okay. Court, as you know, this came up as a part of the ARPA project, a way of enhancing communications when we do not have any in the cellular realm, which we've had in the past. Sheriff, Jody, if y'all would like to speak toward this, we actually had a incident in the past to where we were very limited in a manhunt due to this. The type of communications was needed are in addition to our radio communications. Sheriff?
Yes, sir. In the manhunt, more for our, since we had bad cell service, we actually had the Fire Marshal's Office out there setting up emergency management command posts with us, other agencies, other counties coming on. And we actually at the time had to borrow one of the investigators' phones, we had FirstNet, and we all joined to that phone. And of course, that follows that down. And we didn't have communication. This will fix that problem. We can throw it up, and 200 individuals can join that tower. We've got a two-mile radius, and then 600-foot radius for Wi-Fi. And then not only the manhunt there, but then the tornado hit over in Coffee City, cell service was in and out due to the storm and all the activity in the area. And it would have been, it would have been a tragedy out there that day, too, because we were struggling out there and couldn't communicate via telephone with these that we were needing to communicate with.
Thank you. Fire Marshal Rimbirdie, who is our emergency management coordinator, we do so much now with cellular and Google Sheets and all of those different aspects of it, this type of abilities to set up and have that communications in the emergency management aspect.
Yeah, like the sheriff stated, in the manhunt, it was important, but the tornado situation, it was spotty at best, and we had hot tea out there with hot spots trying different things. And it's not only emergency management, the sheriff's department, but we have the fire departments, all emergency response who come to the command trailer, and they're trying to utilize our Google Sheets and everything that we use, and not only local, but also the state level. So when they showed up and they were needing to get onto it, we had issues there. So this will even allow us to be able to get Deon from TNEOM or anybody representative from TNEOM on the system and be able to communicate with the state or anybody else.
Thank you. Jody, this is an enhancement portion to our communications as well because of that cellular capability and Deon.
Yes, sir. So with the Wi-Fi, Deon's capable within that 600-foot range of the cow. So that will enhance the communications with our radio system and getting back to dispatch without having to use a cellphone. So it's going to work on both sides of it.
You've been in contact with this organization. Anything you want to add to it?
I mean, it's FirstNet, so that's who our current cellphones and everything are through. I think we've had better coverage with FirstNet than we had Verizon, which is the service provider we had before. So I don't see any issues. I see, not only can we use these for emergencies, but we can also use them for big events. So if you have a large concentration of people that are connected to one cellphone tower, that makes communications rough as well. So this can be used not only in emergencies, but for large-scale events that we might have in the county that we need to communicate with first responders.
And our events are getting larger.
They are.
As we increase in population.
Yes, sir.
Court, questions, comments?
I think I read on there that even it'll link up with the Starlink satellites also.
Yes, sir. The, out of the box, the way it's designed is to link up to the ViaSat satellites that AT&amp;T or FirstNet has contracts with, but there is an optional upgrade to be able to use the Starlink satellites, which obviously there's a few more of them than there at the ViaSat. So that is a capability.
As I read, the AT&amp;T LS Plus package is the one that gives us that additional connectivity to the Starlink.
I believe so, yes, sir.
I think it's important to know, to realize that we've known of this need for six or seven years, and the dependence that our world today has on technology, and when these events occur, and all of those groups, all of those first responders is there, and then they overload the system and they can't communicate with each other, it causes even more problem. And this is probably a system that we wouldn't have been able to afford. But we saved some money on some other ARPA projects, and was able to divert that money over to this project. And I think it's going to enhance our capabilities and make Henderson County even more productive during these times when this system is in need.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments, Court? Hearing none. Entertained a motion with, there is no authorization. Entertained a motion?
So moved to approve. So moved to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner McCam to purchase the cell on wheels system or COWs for emergency communication operations associated with the ARPA fund in the amount of $189,579.96. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor. Passes unanimously. Thank you both. Item number seven, consider and take action on dash cam system purchase using DIRTSO 4101 for the Sheriff's Office in association with the ARPA projects. Ms. Vaughn?
Good morning, Court. Yes, so we have two contracts here presenting. One is using ARPA funds in the amount of $550,080, and the other one is using from, from the Office of the Governor for the amount of $189,955 to purchase body cams and dash cams for the Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff?
Yes, sir. As we spoke in a couple of workshops, our current dash cam system is going to be in the block by February of 2025. It's been a good system we've had for several seasons. We started using it in 2012, but IT's always had to come over the help with portions of it, lieutenants and a couple of the special assignment entities have always had to work on it. It's outdated and basically they're forcing us up. With the ARPA funds, we've been able to work with Motorola and get these contracts to the body cam. And we've got dash cams and also has body cams in it. It's got camera system for the interview room. It's got all the storage. It's going to be cloud storage, it's got the storage that we need. Hopefully, we're able to have to, as far as disk that we make for all these videos that go to prosecutors, hopefully, we can just give them access to the system and they can go. We won't have to make as many disks, so we should be able to save money there. Dash cams is mandated by the state of Texas, body cams are not. But I think it's coming. I mean, I'm surprised it's not already here, to be honest with you. And then the other $189,959 is a grant that we applied for, that we were awarded to by the officer of the Governor's Office. And that is strictly for body cam damage of $150 body cam. The other agreement is, gives us, I think, a total of 75. That's going to be the Governor portion, it's going to be for patrol. They wouldn't give us any more for our CID units and our investigation units, which may need body cams also to document things in the cases. So that's in the other dash cam, probably for the $550,000. I'm really excited about this. We had training on it last week and they came in and one of my investigators put on the training along with Motorola. If y'all have any questions, they got up here today. The technology that's there, it's going to be granted to the county commanders. We actually still have, we had a deputy come up, but we couldn't find him or couldn't locate him. We can actually log into this system and log into their body cameras and watch it live. If we had a hostage situation and we're outside trying to make decisions or attack a situation, we're outside trying to make decisions, we can log into a video and see real time what's going on. And we don't have to be there, we can do it from any location as long as we have the access to compute. This is going to be, this is going to be another great deal that I don't foresee we'd have been able to do without the ARPA funding. And we just notified not long ago that our other camera system is in the live and it's just going to be useless at that point. And then if we get this approved, then they're hoping to have this up and running by the end of February, first of March, so the perfect time. And they're actually going to do all of the initial installs.
Court, questions?
I think you said, you know, if we went ahead and got this right now, there's a major savings in this, it would be a price increase that would be a saving by going ahead and using this ARPA fund grant. So go ahead and purchase it.
The discounts are in this quote, is over $300,000. And I do believe if we wait until January 1st, the whole system would probably be closer to $1.2, $1.3 million, and that's not what is at least in quotes. So the county would be saving quite a bit of money if we do move forward that.
Further questions?
I'd just like to emphasize what the Sheriff said just a minute ago. We spent a good deal of money on the Sheriff's Department in the last few minutes. And we were able to do that because we saved some money in our ARPA projects. And these are items that are mandated. The county was going to have to buy these dash cams one way or the other, starting in February when they go offline. And emergency management, the COWs, same instance. And without our savings on some of our other projects, we wouldn't have been able to do it. So this ARPA money has allowed us to do some things that we were going to have to do anyway. But we were going to have, we were going to have some decisions to make to come up with that kind of money to fund some of these projects. And this allowed us to do that without having to go into further tax money.
Further comments? All right then. Entertain a motion to approve the purchase, the two purchase agreements with, this is Motorola, correct, with Motorola Solutions Incorporated, with the judge's authorization to sign.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the purchase agreement with Motorola Solutions. Two agreements, sorry, two agreements for Motorola Solutions for a total dollar amount of $740,035 for dash cam and body cams with the judge's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, item number eight, receive financial reports, of which we have none today. Item nine is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. Mr. Bynum?
Yes, Court. I don't have any accounts cash sheets for you today, but I do have two payroll distribution totals I need to get approval on, and that would be biweekly number 23 and biweekly number 24, if I can please.
Court, are there any questions on biweekly 23? Are there any on biweekly 24? Entertain a motion for both.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the payroll disbursement totals of 23 and 24 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the payroll dispersment totals for biweekly 23 and 24 as presented. Any further comments? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Court.
Item 10, consider and take action on submitted contracts. I believe we've got one today, and concerning the elevator contract, this is elevator maintenance at three locations, the courthouse, the annex, and the dumbwaiter over at the library. We have been under contract with this organization for several years now. They wanted to update the agreement. We thought it was pretty good to begin with, but had Ken Strom with the county attorney's office go back and forth with the company, and I'll ask him to come forward and explain some of the details.
Thank you, Court. We had a few concerns in the contract that was submitted. We were able to have a good communication and discussion with Elevated, the Elevator Company. They were able to address those concerns and they were able to change some of the issues that we had as a county with the contract, namely, just the term, it's a three-year term, and then changing the auto renewal to make sure that the county would be able to look at that through budget and do it appropriately without it just auto-renewing. That way, it could come back to court. So we were able to get those accomplished.
Hearing none, entertain a motion with the judge's authorization to sign.
So moved to approve with the judge's authorization to sign.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Tully to approve the contract with Elevated for our elevator maintenance contract with the judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 11, consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits.
There's a couple out in Precinct 1.
A couple, you say? Commissioner Spivey?
This is Bright Speed moving forward with their ARPA project plan, and I'm the first titty-pig. So I have 67 right-of-way permits, three pages of roads, but I'm going to attach these to the minutes and just say which subdivisions they're in. But it's a total of 105,304 feet aerial and 5,059 feet of buried fiber optics cable. I'll be glad to answer any questions. It is for Bright Speed.
Court, questions for the Commissioner?
Can you identify every one of them?
I will say that subdivisions is Philview Acres, Lakeview, Key Ranch Estates, and Waterborne are the four subdivisions they're starting with.
Any other questions? I would like to add, as mentioned by the Commissioner, this is a part of another ARPA project with our broadband expansion. If you did not know, the project is beginning on the western side, moving east. There are two companies involved under Bright Speed to build out this service. And this is the first, what you could say, wave of permits that is coming. And we're glad to see it moving in this.
There are 65 with one contractor and two with another one in here.
Did you get us all a paper copy of that?
It's in your Mac, I'm sorry. In the drive.
And this is a different approach, as we knew it would be, than when we had Charter Spectrum coming through. But we knew when Bright Speed started, they were going to come in force. That was one of the negotiation points that we had with them. Once they got things lined up, it would be in full force. Mr. Trailer versus involving ARPA, anything you'd like to add?
Judge and Commissioners, I'm just so happy to see it moving. And as I was coming back from out-of-town travel on Sunday, I could see evidence of them starting on the western side. And so, you know, kind of fun to see it going on, and I hope that they move as fast as they say that they are. I'm glad that they're providing the reports to us to kind of tell us a little bit about their progress on that. And I'm really happy that they're providing a whole lot more information in those reports as of now versus whenever we start. Now, there's a whole lot more meat in those reports. It's a really good sign for Henderson County.
You're not near as happy as we are to see it on the road.
Is there any other discussion or questions concerning the permits in front of us?
I would like to point out that they did a really good job on their permits. In each road that they did a permit for, they listed how many feet of aerial and how many feet of buried there would be, which there's not very much buried considering there is aerial, but they were very accurate on their paperwork. I hope they're accurate, anyway.
Well, it took the involvement, and as I know Commissioner Tully has said, there has been the difficulties in the beginning of this. So appreciate both of your work with them to get to this point. Any further questions or comments of the Commissioner? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the proposed utility line activity for Bright Speed, aforementioned subdivision roads located in Precinct 1 with the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion.
I sound so happy.
I disrespect a second next week.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner Tully to approve the aforementioned right-of-way agreements with, the 67 right-of-way agreements with Bright Speed with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further comments? All those in favor. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you.
Get to signing.
Item 12, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments.
Yes, sir. We just have some interview cleanup.
Court, questions concerning the presented budget amendments? It's just the beginning of budget amendment season. If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved to approve as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the budget amendments as presented. Any further comment? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Item 13, consider and take action on payment of bills.
Yes, we have fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $322,135.20.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tully?
I have none. She's going to fix my journal entry.
Commissioner McCam?
I have no question.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
I did have one little question. I see a notation, and I should know this all these years, JE957. Is that denoting a journal entry?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $322,135.20 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the bills in the amount of $322,135.20 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Item 14, consider and take action on submitted plats.
We have one pipe in Precinct 3, and all these are taped.
Commissioner McCam?
Oh, excuse me. Yes, I have a plat from, final plat for greener acres. It's a track, one track of land split into three tracks, 3.6 acres, 4.4 acres, and 3.6 acres. We have the builder here, Mr. Drew Douglas, and we also have Samantha here with the development office. If anybody has any questions, it's a little bit different than some of the other ones we've looked at. All the information that we need is on here, but there's probably some information that we didn't need that's on here. But I believe everything that we need is on this plat.
Questions for the Commissioner? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the final plat for greener acres in Precinct 3.
I'll second the motion.
For filing.
For filing purposes only.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the final plat of greener acres located in Precinct 3 for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Item 15, open and consider bids, which we have none today. Item 16, convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.3074 to deliberate and discuss job applications and candidates for the positions of Henderson County Fire Marshal and Precinct 2 Justice of the Peace. Court, can we get a motion to move into executive session and a time?
I'll make the motion to move into executive session at 9:55.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to move into executive session at 9:55. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Passes unanimously.
Right. Item seventeen is to reconvene into open session. May we have a motion?
I'll make the motion at 11:19.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to reconvene into open session at 11:19 a.m. All those in favor. Passes unanimously. We now have reconvened into open session to consider and take action on matters discussed in executive session, of which I do not believe there are any we need to take today for the public. Our process continues for the selection of fire marshal and justice of the peace precinct two. Court comments? If not, we'll move to item eighteen, which is considering take action to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner Richardson to adjourn at 11:20. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously.